Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I will call the Northborough School Committee into open session. This is our November meeting. However, it is, today is Monday, October 30th, 2017. And we have a special start time of 6:30. It's just past 6:30, at 6:32. And we had to move our November meeting. I know, it's strange that this is a November meeting, but we're still in October. But we needed to move it up two days early because of our conference, which is an item, it is an item on the agenda, so we'll discuss that later. And an early, a little bit of an earlier start time, 6:30 instead of our usual 7:00. Appreciate everyone's accommodation to the change in day and time. We will start the meeting this evening with the first item on our agenda, which is the action on the minutes, which is the action of the open meeting minutes of October 4th, 2017. Mr. Kane?
I'm going to accept the minutes from the Northborough School Committee Open Meeting, Wednesday, October 4th, 2017.
One second. Any comments, concerns? All in favor? Opposed, abstention? No, um, three in favor, none opposed, one abstention. Next item on the agenda is the New Business Proctor School Improvement Plan and PTO Presentation. Do you want to have PTO Presentation first? Uh, no, I don't think so.
You're good.
Can you come down?
Please.
Yeah.
Do you want the lights off now, or?
I think, yeah, maybe. I think it might show up a little bit better.
Okay, so my name is Jennifer Lacass, and I'm the President of the Proctor PTO. And this is Jennifer Kenny. She's our Vice President. We have an Executive Board, which is made up of four members, myself, Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary. And we all hold two-year positions. So next year, Jen Kenny will be the President. This is our budget for this year. It's eighteen thousand, seven hundred and five dollars, which we increased two thousand dollars compared to last year. We added two thousand more dollars for enrichment programs. Last year was five thousand, we increased it to seven thousand. And another big one is school grants for five thousand dollars. And then field trips, we increased due to the cost of the buses. So we allotted more money this year for that. We have various volunteer roles, and we always need people to help us, which can be a struggle sometimes. But a couple of the newer volunteer roles are the Box Morning Exercise Program, which we implemented last year, and it's on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. And it's free to the kids. They pay five dollars to get a tee-shirt. And it fills up super fast, and the kids love it. And then the other one is the Box Tops Coordinator. We, in the past, we haven't really done much with box tops. And starting last year, we really got more into it. And then this past year, we started offering like raffles and prizes for the top winners. And so we had one for September and October, and we got over two thousand box tops, which works out to be two hundred dollars, which is awesome. So these are some, a sampling of our enrichment programs that we've booked for this year. We're still working to get one for the first grade as well as the fifth grade. We had, the Caterpillar Lab already came in, and the kids loved it. I know my own kids were raving about it.
Very popular.
And then the other ones, we have the Museum of Science, the Geology Rock Detectives. We're having Crocodile River Music for the entire school, Animal Adventures, the Museum of Science Electromagnetism, Mr. Kim's Puppet Show, and the author, Brian Lys, is coming in for the whole school. And we also do some PTO-sponsored events. We just had, this past Saturday night, we had our Halloween Dance Party, which is a free event for our families. And we had a great turnout, everyone loved it. So that was awesome. And we also collected food pantry donations, since they're in dire need of non-perishable food. And we're also, another one we're doing new this year is the Proctor Papa's Pancake Breakfast. We're going to do it in February, and it's going to be free in conjunction with our book fair. And the Proctor Papas, which is a group for father figures at our school, they, they love to do it, they run the grill, and it should be a fun event. These are some of our fundraisers. We just did our first-ever fundraiser in October, and it raised over twenty-five hundred dollars for the school. And we get a hundred percent of the proceeds. And the kids had a lot of fun, it was great exercise for them. So I think we're going to do it again next year.
Definitely.
Yeah. And then, another kind of neat one we do is the Game Right Game Night. We're doing it at the end of November. And we get all games from the game company, Game Right, and we can demo them, so families can come in, play the games. And then if they want to purchase them, they can. And then we get fifty percent of the proceeds. So it's awesome, Christmas gifts, birthday gifts, and the families really like it. And then the other new one we're doing is the Worcester Railers, because they're a new hockey team in Worcester. And we've gone to the Providence Bruins in the past. But this year, we're going to try out the Railers and see how it is. It's closer to home, supporting something in Massachusetts. And so far, our fundraising to date is, the fundraiser made twenty-five hundred dollars. We sold spirit ware that made about two hundred dollars. And then our back-to-school barbecue made almost nine hundred dollars. And then, the last week at our PTO meeting, we approved, we were able to approve fourteen grants with our five thousand dollar budget, which is awesome. We were able to get standing desks for all the classrooms in kindergarten to second grade. And, let's see, what else? We were able to get the Second Step Fourth Grade Curriculum. And another one is the school store prizes for first grade. It's really nice, they get to have on Friday afternoons a school store, and they get some, they earn money in their classroom. And then a parent volunteer comes in, and they can buy little prizes with their money, and they can learn how to make change and stuff. And then the hardcover publisher books are these blank hardcover books. And they, throughout the year, the kids do their writing. And then at the end, they pick their best works, and they get to put it into the book. And then they get to draw on the cover, and they keep it. So it's a nice memory to have. And that's it.
I'll open up to any members.
Thank you so much for doing what you do. You help enrich the experience of Proctor. And certainly, as we come up into budget season, all the fundraising efforts of the PTOs, including yours, are very important. You provide that extra special experience that the kids get that we just can't provide in the budget. So thank you for doing what you do. Keep it up, have a great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Again, I'm just going to echo that sentiment. Thank you so much. And it's not just about the money, but your hard work. And there's, you can't put a price on the amount of work, the time and effort that you put in to putting this all together, and to spearheading all these initiatives for the parents and the families of Proctor School. So thank you very much for your volunteerism, and for everything that you do for the school and the students. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I just want to say, I mean, they're absolutely wonderful. They're such a fun group to work with. And, you know, we'll talk about new ideas and what we can bring into the school that connects to what we're doing in the curriculum. And I think that we do our reading week, where we had referenced the Pancake Breakfast, and the, that's all going to be connected to our Read-A-Thon and a Literacy Spirit Week that we're doing. We have some fun events planned. It's really been a collaboration with both Jen and Jen and the PTO to make that happen. So I really appreciate their partnership. And they go above and beyond in everything they do. Our Halloween party on Saturday night was just awesome. Great time, really, really fun. The kids are still talking about it today. We left some of the decorations up, and they were talking at lunch. And it was just a nice way to bring families together. So I'm just very appreciative of everything that they do for our school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do a quick transition.
Before Alana begins her presentation, I wanted to take a moment to share with you some conversations that we had about this year's cycle of school improvement plans. Some folks are on, some buildings are on a new plan, and others are on an update. And a positive comment, because it really did demonstrate to us as we began and continued the conversations about what we should be doing with our school improvement plans, five years or almost six years into our strategic plan. And as we began to have conversations about the alignment of the initiatives at each of the schools with the strategic plan and all of the focus areas, we realized that we are at a point where for us to continue to make progress in certain focus areas, we need to dig a little bit deeper. So over the last four or five years, we've spent, we've spent a lot of time updating the committee and the community on the kinds of things that we've done to improve communications, whether it be websites, or additional communications home, or different events that are scheduled throughout the year. And so there was some very positive redundancy in themes from school to school, because this was good work that was accomplished by all. So Alana and I had, she willingly went first in the SIP rotation of things. And so we had a great conversation about where is Fannie Proctor School right now? If we were to look at the Proctor School with all of the things, all of the wonderful things that have been accomplished in all of those areas over time, what next activity or goal would you want to realize to move your school along, that continuum of growth for all students? And so we realized that having, you know, more than, at this point, three significant, no more than three significant goals, would not allow us to dig as deeply as we would like into certain areas that we've identified for improvement. And so this evening, you'll see an overview of all the great events and work that's taken place at the Proctor School. But you'll also note the number of goals are less than previous presentations. And that is because we are really focusing on specific identified areas for growth for our students. So we've talked a lot about social and emotional growth. And even last school committee meeting, we talked a little bit about what that analysis was going to look like, and what specifically are we doing around social, emotional growth for students at the Proctor School, or at all of our schools. And so I think you'll see that is a deeper dive into what the goal statements are for the next one or two years. This is a new plan, so there'll be an update. And that doesn't mean that we're not continuing all of the good works that have been accomplished, and will continue to in the other focus areas. So it was a little bit of an intro into a different conversation about where we find ourselves as we align and continue to align to our strategic plan. The great news is that we have some exciting work ahead of us as we envision the future and turn that into some very specific new focus areas perhaps, or goals, as we develop a new strategic plan. And we've, we've talked a little bit about that. One of the things that we're doing is, we're in the process of defining all that we have accomplished in the five years, and then where do we go next? And that the emphasis will really be on teaching and learning as opposed to the four focus areas that we identified five years ago. We had significant work to do in the area of communications. Not that it's not important, but it's less important as we move forward in terms of our continuum of growth. Our technology is now about not acquisition of hardware, per se, and upgrading of infrastructure, but rather, how is that now, used as a tool in the classroom, going to drive students' growth and achievement? And so that's a shift in our focus. And we know that we've talked about instructional rounds as really a key component of that, and that work is underway. So exciting work to be done, and a great transitional conversation tonight.
All right. So I'm hoping I do this justice, being the first one. So I know my colleagues will greatly improve upon what I'm doing when they do their plans. So I just wanted to thank our, our school council. We have some new members this year, which is exciting. So it's myself, Diane Gage, our school nurse, has joined our school council. Sean Gillespie is one of our special education teachers. She's our Castle Program teacher. Christine Lyons, a member of our parent community, has continued to serve on it, which is great to have her, you know, as we continue with this process, help guide us through that as a parent. Bonnie Strickland is our new community representative. And we have Cindy Taylor, who's one of our fifth-grade teachers. So when we looked at our school improvement plan with our school council, we really felt that we wanted to keep our mission and values consistent, and the vision consistent with where we started two years ago. Coming in new, writing a plan as a new principal at the Proctor School a couple of years ago, we had tweaked some of this a little bit, but really felt that this still spoke to where we were as a school, and where we wanted to continue to go and grow. One of the things that we added to our mission statement is we've been talking a lot about leaving a positive footprint on the world around us. And this takes the form of, you know, how we work with each other, how we work in the community, and how we help our, the larger world around us. And doing community service projects, and doing other things that's going to not only better our school community and the work we do with each other, but the wider world around us. So we felt it was important to add that as part of our mission statement, and then continuing with our vision statement around giving our children tools to be lifelong learners and to be successful as they grow and get older, that they'll take on to middle, high school, college, and beyond, into the workplace. So we focused on communication, respect, responsibility, perseverance with challenges, and curiosity to explore and discover in the world around them. So those remain pretty consistent. So one of the things, our theme that we always talk about is taking pride in everything that we do at Proctor. A lot of times, we put out Twitter feeds, we, you know, hashtag it with that Proctor Pride. And the kids, who are much more text savvy than we are sometimes, they love the hashtag, so they'll always say, "Just put the hashtag on it." So they know that we talk about pride, it's taking pride in our work that we do every day. It's all that learning that we do in the classrooms. It's in our relationships with the adults, and their peers around them, and in the world around us. And this is a picture from, we had spoken about our efforts to help hurricane relief, you know, provide that relief to victims of the hurricanes. And this was the start of our collection, the donations that came in with a couple of our fourth-grade students who were assisting with that. So these are just some pictures to highlight the first week of school, some of the things that we do that speak to that Proctor Pride. So one of the pictures, and it's a little grainy on the left, but that's Ms. Mulvena's fourth-grade classroom. And it's really setting that tone for the school year and building community. So this was a picture, I happened to go in, and they were doing alien greetings with each other. So they all had to write an alien greeting, using the person to their, their left and their right, their names, and say them backwards. And they just thought it was the best thing ever. And they were all laughing, and, you know, they were very engaged in it. And it's those kinds of things that build community in our school. The top right picture is our fifth graders. We asked them to take on additional responsibilities over the course of the school year. And one of those is they help with kindergarten lunch the first week and a half, because that's obviously a big transition for our kindergarten students. It's how do you navigate the line, and open milk cartons and packages? And just getting to the table can be challenging. So we ask our fifth graders to step up, and we, we have fifty of them that want to volunteer, so they help throughout that first week and a half as our kindergarten students transition in. And then lastly, I started off the school year a little bit different in that I went into individual classrooms, every single classroom, and read them a story that was around respecting each other's differences, and how do you be a helper, and kindness, and compassion, and caring. And then we all did an activity of who we are at Proctor, words that described each student individually. And that's represented up on our bulletin board when you walk in. And we continue to do activities that build upon that. So moving forward, some of our accomplishments that I just wanted to highlight this past school year, the two years leading into a new plan, is we've really tried to work on consistently using those pacing guides in the area of reading. Those are a wonderful resource that bring, you know, continuity across all four of our elementary schools, around what we're working on. So our teachers have been working with their district colleagues using those, planning instruction, as well as developing that workshop model, where students are engaged in a mini lesson, and then they're put into groups. And they're working in those groups, and meeting with the teacher in small groups, and reinforcing the skills that they're working on. And we're also, we've been very fortunate, Superintendent Johnson had reference around technology, of we have the supports now, so using those in a purposeful and meaningful way to provide students with access to technology that's going to support their work in literacy, such as Lexia, RAS Kids, resources like that, that they can use in those small groups. And with writing, we continue to use the Lucy Cockens Writing Units of Study. All of our teachers are using those to work on narrative, expository writing units in the classrooms. We continue, and you'll, this will be part of our work going into the next two years, working around constructed response and essay work. So how do we work with our students in kindergarten through grade five on developing their writing skills? Starting at, you know, the kindergarten level with just speaking in a written sentence. And then how does that begin to translate into writing as they get older, and they learn their letters, and they learn how to form a sentence? And then again, also that workshop model, which you'll see a theme of across all of our content areas. Mathematics, using the Envision 2.0 curriculum. That has been an excellent foundational resource of what all of our teachers are using for their math instruction. And then incorporating technology and math games within the classroom to make that routine instruction. So with the math games, it's not only building skills, but they're working with peers on collaboration skills. How do you work together to solve problems? And we've been able to see this, you know, really high level of engagement with our students, and, you know, building those interpersonal skills that are so necessary as they get older and need to work together. We've also been working with Maggie McGinty, our math coordinator, on data workbooks as well, which I'll be speaking to. So we started that work last year, and it's really taken off in allowing us to use data to inform our practices and instruction. And then lastly, with science, technology, and engineering, implementation of the life science units, and the engineering is elementary. And it's a little hard to see the picture up there, but fourth grade dissected squids. And they did a fabulous job of organizing fifty fourth graders last year that are now fifth graders, in a very organized manner, to go out and have an excellent experience with that. And we did it outside, and it just, it was amazing. And they got so much out of it, and none of them were squeamish. Everyone had a job to do as part of it, and they were very masterful at it. So just a little picture of that. So as we transition into our school improvement plan this year, we have two goal areas. And our first goal area is using multiple data sources across all of our subject areas, all those content areas, to help inform our practices and guide our instructional decision-making, to improve our student outcomes. So with that, what we've been doing, and what we plan to do for the next two years, is we want to look at multiple data sources in order to look at what are our students doing, how are they performing? And then what can we do based on that data to then provide them with meaningful instruction that's going to keep moving them forward? So some of these, you know, multiple assessment pieces that we're using is we use our BASS assessments in the area of literacy. We use our guided reading groups, gathering formative assessment data that we can use in the day-to-day to make instructional decisions, using results from the DIBELS, or pre- and post-tests that we give in the different subject areas. Helping technology, having technology as well, using iReady, you know, that provides us with a baseline of students' mathematical skills against the standards, and then being able to decide, well, where do we want, how are we going to move students? What instruction are we going to provide them with, activities day-to-day? How can they do that with their peers in order to progress and move forward against their baseline? Using Pierce and Realize, which is part of the Envision 2.0, to gather data, which has been really interesting in terms of giving students immediate feedback, which they really like. Because when they take those assessments, they're able to see, "Oh, I, I got this, and this went really well, but I need to work on this." And they can engage in a dialogue with the teachers around that. So we've seen success in that with the upper grades, and providing immediate feedback to students. And also using, like we discussed earlier, Lexia/RAS, to get information from those sources as well. So that goes along with the second bullet point, bullet point of using those online assessment tools to collect and review that data. What we've built into our master schedule this year is professional learning communities. And that's where every grade level meets once a week with myself. And we have it structured every month that there's a meeting with Maggie McGinty, with our reading teacher, and with our student support staff. And we rotate those meetings so that we can take this data and look at what's happening with our students, and then work together to come up with plans to meet their needs, and instruction that will meet their needs. So we started meeting the first week of October after the initial first six weeks of, you know, getting settled in and building routines and structures, and we meet regularly. So I work with the teams, I make a structured agenda, I send that out a week in advance. They come to the table, and I come to the table with the data that we've been collecting, and the data workbooks. And then we sit as a team, we kind of dissect that data together. And we look at student performance and relationship to standards, and then talk about what can teachers do in order to support students, both with extra support, and then those students that are progressing along very nicely, how can we enrich them, and provide them with opportunities to learn at a different pace, or learn something different that'll meet their needs? So the scheduling model that we have affords us that opportunity, and then allows us, within that workshop model, to then implement what we're seeing with the data. So that's something we want to continue to work on and refine the next two years, as this is our full first year of implementation, of working together. And then, at the end of the year, deciding what worked well and what we need to improve upon with that. So the workshop models I spoke to earlier provides that opportunity for students to work in small groups, have time with the teacher to conference, work in, you know, target areas, goal areas that they have, and again, going back to that data piece. The other thing that we've implemented is regular consultation and collaboration with our student support service staff members. So special education, or our reading teacher, and having them come to the table with shared students and discussing, what do those students need? Because their needs might look different than some of the other students in the classroom. And how can we work together as a team? Because, you know, it's our kids, these are all of our students. So how can we work together to make sure that that instruction is really meaningful throughout the entire day for those students? So we do that, we have weekly consults. We have a day set aside in the week where our teachers meet with student support staff members. And that schedule varies grade level to grade level. And then it's also part of our PLC model as well. And one of the other exciting things that's happening at Proctor that we started this year, and we want to build upon, is our teachers have been working with our student support staff members to develop targeted intervention plans for students. So if a student is experiencing a difficulty in reading, in some facet of reading, there's a six-week intervention plan that we can access and use with them and tailor to their needs. And then we would continue to track the data around this and hope to see progress. So then we would come back to the table again, look at that intervention, see how it was working for the student, and then, you know, tweak that. working for the student, and then tweak that or provide additional support or that might have remediated the problem. And the student might be where we'd want to see them. So we have, right currently, we're working in the area of reading. We want to expand that to math over the next year. So we have intervention programs that build on automaticity, phonology, comprehension, sight words. So we started building at the K to 2 level and we're going to keep progressing on the grades three through five level. So that just started, so that work's going to be ongoing. So these are just some pictures that kind of speak to what we've been doing just this school year in the past eight weeks. And you'll see, we have a very active Makerspace mobile lab that has been amazing. It provides the opportunity for the students to collaborate, the teachers to collaborate with our technology specialist. So he has been active coming into our schools. The upper left-hand corner was one of our third-grade classrooms and our other third-grade classrooms will be working on this is learning about Massachusetts and making a board game. And so that's Worcester County that's represented. And that was all done with Tinkercad by our third-grade students, connected to that study of Massachusetts. The picture below is a guided reading group taking place in a first-grade classroom. And in the lower left-hand corner, that is our third graders, they're working on fluency. And so those are the B-bots that they had to program to answer math facts. And it was different, all the maths had different fax families. So they had to code for each one of those, working in partners. So that was really fun to watch. The Lego We Do kits that have been used in the fourth grade, as well as some good old-fashioned Makerspace materials down the bottom that was collected. And there was a design and engineering project in second grade that they completed. In the upper right, Maggie McGinty has introduced us to estimate 180. And that's a problem of, an estimation problem of the day that students use as part of one of their rotations. So that's another picture of third grade where we had launched that. And just a picture of what a math conference can look like, that's one of our fifth-grade classrooms engaging in a math conference, a student and the teacher together. And the bottom is actually Mrs. McGinty modeling a lesson for us on an area that we were working on. So she had come in and modeled, worked with the students and the teacher, and then came back and the teacher was doing the teaching and she was giving feedback. So those are just some of the things that speak to this data piece and how critical that is in shaping what we do every day. So our second goal area is one that's very near and dear to our hearts at Proctor is the social-emotional health and wellness of our students. And our goal for the next two years is to explore, examine, and implement research curriculum and instructional practices in this area and add to our children's social and emotional toolboxes by providing them with strategies for self-regulation, mindfulness, and stress reduction. I think we all know that our students, they're very busy, we all have busy lives, and they're involved in a lot of activities and there's a lot of things that they're engaged in. So we want to provide them with opportunities to learn these strategies so that when they have competing demands or when they're faced with stress, they have the tools and resources to call upon and be able to self-regulate, self-com in the school environment, as well as outside the school environment as they become older. So one of the things that we are looking to do this year is we are going to engage in a co-treatment model with our school psychologists, behavior specialists, and our speech and language pathologists and go into our classrooms as part of the morning meeting process, as well as in other parts of the day where it fits naturally. And they're going to be leading lessons in the areas of social thinking, the zones of regulation, and using our second step curriculum. So again, we're very thankful to the PTO for that fourth-grade kit because that's going to be a very big piece of this. So that will look like them going in, teaching those lessons, and then the teachers carrying over the language and the practices from those lessons afterwards, so that it's one continuous thread. We also, through the generosity of NEF, received a grant this year for a Zen Zone. So the Zen Zone is a room that's dedicated to calming and alerting strategies, very prescriptive strategies that a child who would benefit from access to that space, and it can be anybody in the school, will go, will be taught those strategies, and will have their own toolbox and toolkit that they can use that we'll put together for them. And they can access that whenever the need arises. And we're going to keep data on that so that we can see if that's beneficial to them and it's effective. And we can change that as needed for those students. So we're in the midst of, the materials are coming in because we just got the grant about a month ago and we're setting that up. We've already had students accessing the space and we've been using the tools we have. But we're very excited to be able to add more tools to that. So we think that that's going to be a great space for students to learn those strategies. We're also continuing to engage in professional development with outside consultants that will help us better understand the needs of our students in learning those theories and practices and how our school psychologists, our behavior specialists can engage in learning around those and professional development and then bring it back to our classroom teachers and do some trainings, as well as some direct in-class work. So we're very grateful to have partnerships with Dr. Carrie Wilkins, Jerry Schultz, as well as working with Jessica Minahan this year to work on those target areas of social-emotional health for our students and be able to take it back to our students. And this is also done in our monthly job-alikes that they attend with their district colleagues so they can collaborate and work together on this and learn from one another. The other grant that we received from NEF that we're very grateful for is for responsive classroom. We want to focus on the teacher language modular in the upcoming 18, 19 school years. This will provide a foundational training to all of our teachers and support staff and our classroom instructional assistants, everybody that works with the children around teacher language and how to use that effectively with students, particularly those students that might be experiencing some challenges, and how you can better work with them in a positive and engaging manner. So we're excited to bring that into our school year in the 18, 19 school year and looking forward to reporting out on that, we do an update. We continue to have ongoing relationships and partnerships with outside agencies that have been tremendously helpful to us, particularly with students that might require some supports outside of the school day, that can support them and their families. Because we all know this is a process that our families need to be heavily involved in and that the learning doesn't stop after the school day ends. So providing these supports for our families through Family and Youth Services, FSP. We also have a partnership with Pathways to Wellness. They've done some training with our staff as well that's been very valuable in helping to feed into our Zen Zone work and kind of primed us for that work this period of time. So we're very grateful for those and look to develop different partnerships and new partnerships. We'd also like to bring in some outside agencies to directly work and present to our students on bullying and cyberbullying with the technology and the savviness that comes with that. Our students come in knowing so much more than we do sometimes that we want to make sure that they're educated on how to use technology safely and how to advocate for themselves if they do encounter something via cyberbullying that might be with the technology piece or bullying in general, that how we can empower our students and help them to advocate for themselves. And then lastly, we're very excited that we have some opportunities coming up this year and next year, just around things that will engage the body and the mind. And so when the PTO presented, they spoke to the Reebok Box Program, which has been very successful at Proctor. We have a gym full of students, two mornings a week, we start this Thursday. And it's just a great way to get students ready for school, wake up the brain, wake up the body. We've been able to offer that for all of our grade levels during different cycles and how it's offered. We also are bringing yoga in this school year. We have a partnership with someone who's going to come in this winter and engage in some yoga for the students and the staff, if the staff would like to participate. And that person is also going to be doing some mindfulness with our students as well. So we're excited about that. I think this is a great way to have students understand that connection between the mind and the body and how your brain works and what the benefits of exercise and the forms of running or box or yoga and how that can help our students. We also have some other initiatives that we've been doing too that kind of feed into this around the social-emotional and making our students feel good. We have a buddies program where grade levels, older grade levels buddy up with younger grade levels and they engage in fun activities together. So there's a learning piece to it, but it's also that opportunity for some of our younger students to have some older mentor-type students that work with them. We also have students that will go with each other for breaks. So we have some pairings where a third-grade student is currently working with a first-grade student. And every morning, he's very responsible in taking that younger student on a supervised break to the gym to shoot some baskets and it helps that younger student self-regulate in the morning. And it's just been such a nice friendship that's blossomed between the two of them. And the older student is so proud of the work that he's doing and the younger student feels very successful in what he's doing in the classroom because he gets those breaks in that time. So we have a couple different pairings like that. And our siblings, we have a lot of siblings and they're great about, they go and they read to their younger siblings in the classrooms and they do activities with them when we're able to provide those opportunities. So it's just fostering that, an environment where we're working together and we're helping each other. And these are just, again, some of the pictures from this year of some of our trainings at the end of last year to this year, Pathways to Wellness in the top or left corner spoke to us about some of the mental health that's impacting our students and what they're seeing a lot of in their work with students and helping us to better understand that. Some of our artwork that focused on respecting differences and embracing those differences in our school. The lower-left one is one of our second step lessons. And so it's a student who's actually modeling and acting out a skill that they've been working on in the classroom. Continuing to build classroom community, that was our fun first day of school, fourth grade. We talk a lot about the zones of regulation, about how your body's feeling. We want our students to be in that green zone, being regulated, ready for learning. So we talk to them a lot about what it feels like if you're feeling really tired and really sluggish and slow and what that looks like in the classroom, if you have a lot of energy and really your engine's running way too high being in that red zone. So we do prescriptive work around that in our classrooms. Our staff in the lower-right corner was engaging in their own activities to help them regulate some stress. So blowing bubbles has become an activity that we've taught our students that connect the breathing, deep breaths, and working with bubbles on that for our younger students to show them what it looks like. Siblings reading with each other. And we also use a lot of Go Noodle as an activity for when we need to either calm or alert. So this one was from the end of last year of them taking a dance break in between when they were transitioning from a math to a reading lesson. So they're very good dancers. If you've never tried Go Noodle, encourage you to try. I can't keep up with it. I was in kindergarten doing it Friday and they're better dancers than I am. So that's our school improvement plan.
Thank you. That was a lot, very ambitious. I'll open up to comments or questions from committee members. Keith?
Excellent.
Thank you.
This is music to my ears. The focus on data gathering, I think, is hugely important just because if you're not tracking it, it's just not on the radar. And then taking that and doing structured data review and having multiple staff members is fantastic. And I'd like to point out to those present that the relationship between the teacher's ability to gather data and class size, the bigger the class is, the harder it is to do that. So that's all this madness we go through with tracking class sizes and trying to do the puzzle that is ratios. These things are actually very much related. So it's not all for naught. It's hugely important to be within that number that allows a teacher to do that quality work. And I think it's awesome that there's so much collaboration happening just because you get a kind of synergy when that happens and a cross-pollination between the different knowledge and experience of staff members. And it also creates shared ownership of student achievement when it's not yours versus mine and that's your job and not mine type of thing. So I think it's really fantastic. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great plan.
Thank you. Other members? Any other comments?
Good.
It was very good.
I just wanted to mention too, real quickly, about goal number two. You did a great job at goal number one. I completely agree with your observations. But with goal number two, and how important this social-emotional toolbox and addressing this as an issue, this was the front page of yesterday's Middlesex Daily News. It was a great story and they included a story about how important, they had a picture of students doing yoga, which I thought is very timely that you incorporated that into your presentation. But another thing that has been in the news recently is the tools that you're giving your students at this young age, it really, it pays off. And studies have been, recent studies have shown that the investment in doing these kinds of practices at this age are resulting in lower crime and lower social concerns as the children age into adults because they have learned these tools as children. So I'm very thankful that you're addressing these needs and that you have this incorporated into your plan. Thank you so much. You're very ambitious, but very spot-on for your goals. I just have a couple of questions in regards to your English language learners. Are there any, anything extra, is there any initiatives that address their needs?
They're part of, when we talk about the data teams and the meeting, they're included in all of that. So it's, yeah, so we don't separate out by, we're only going to talk about this group or this group of learners. We talk about everybody. Our English language teacher was part of our discussions around our data last week. She was involved in a very big discussion around that, what that looks like, what can she do in her individual work with them, and then what can we do in the classroom with them? So that's part of, yeah, that's part of all of this data that we collect and talk about. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to thank the committee for their positive comments and the way in which you've received the transition. Where we go from here certainly is growth and continued improvement, but certainly with the plan, that will evolve as we move forward with this sort of more structured, goal-oriented, greater focus. I just want to point out that in the past, we covered four focus areas with a lot of things that we have already achieved. It's very exciting to spend the same amount of time on two goals that are going to really help guide the work at Proctor for the next year and a half, two years, with a lot of support. And some of that will translate into some budget discussions that we'll have along the way. Like so many of the presentations that we've heard in the past, there are similar trends, there are similar focus areas and actionable items in all of our schools because we are very much aligned as a K8 and K5 school system. So I'm sure we'll be hearing similar themes as we move forward. But I think the conversation we had was, I think it was somewhat empowering to be able as principal to say, this is my focus area for the next two years.
That was the easy part.
That was the easy part.
To decide on the two areas, that was the easy part of it.
So I want to thank Alana for taking a little risk with us as we move forward to what is the next logical next step in our evolution of plans. And also to thank the PTO because it's nice to hear that the students have fun learning with all these fun activities. But the way that you've partnered with Alana, with the principal and the teachers to really support those initiatives that we have in the areas of curriculum and technology is very exciting. So many of them are reviewed on the screen and I think that shows your commitment to the goals and the growth that we want to see at Proctor. So thank you for all of that, it's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Presentations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to move on?
Good question. I don't know who's better to answer it. What's the status of instructional rounds maybe across campuses?
Yeah, so that's a topic that we've had, we began at the combined meeting. And so there'll be a much more expanded presentation at the next combined meeting. But the administrative team continues to work on this as a collaborative collegial goal for the district. We did suggest that on the onset, it was probably going to be a two-year to three-year process, much like Atlas. Greg is doing a great job, along with the cohort that did attend the initial week-long training at Harvard. And we've had two presentations. training at Harvard, and we've had two presentations, I think, this year. One, and we had a second one, we had one in the summer and then one since we've been in session to, again, begin that dialogue. And we've also introduced, data-wise, Greg, I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit more with the NASA team, but our curriculum leaders, about 45 of us, sort of at the building level, are also involved in that training process. So they will be, we will be building up capacity in all of our schools in the same way through our curriculum leaders and our administrative team.
In short, it's being phased in?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That'll be thoughtful. We want to get it right instead of rush through it.
Well, it's, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to it, and there's logistics, but that's great. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. So we take a short transition, and then we'll move into kindergarten study, another presentation. Keith, I don't know if you want to stay.
So we have a lot of folks that were involved in this work over the last year and a half, and I think it's very appropriate after taking somewhat of a more fine-tuned view of the goals at the Proctor School that we also really examined the changes in our kindergarten program over the last, probably since 2011, when they started to put a new focus on state assessment and also the changes that were taking place with the Common Core and the different requirements that were part of the new curriculum framework changes as well. So 2011, 2012 was a very powerful year in education, given the number of sort of mandated change that, changes that each of our school districts faced and everyone across the curriculum as well. And that is really where we began the alignment conversation with the frameworks and some of the core elements as we've moved through. It's been some time since we really presented kindergarten, the changes in the curriculum of kindergarten. We've talked about it from a budgetary standpoint certainly every year, especially when we're about to send out the new letters to incoming kindergarten students. And so as Keith pointed out, we've been looking at some of this through the lens of class size and budget. And so this is a conversation that we will be taking up again after the first of the year, once registrations take place.
You'll need my password. I would shout it out, but I know it's, I think that would defeat the purpose of that.
Yeah, are the IT folks?
Of the IT folks.
(inaudible).
So while we're continuing to transition, technology transition, there are a number of folks in the audience that I would like to introduce, and they're actually listed on the kindergarten study PowerPoint slide in the handout that was presented to you, and I think there are a number of here this evening. We have three parents who actually approached me almost, oh, was it two years ago now, I think, were, they called one day and said, gee, we'd like to look at kindergarten, and how do we do that? So we formed a study group, and we've been happily meeting ever since, and I'd like them to stand if you wouldn't mind when I introduce you, and...
Rebecca, I think you're on...
Yay, I knew. I said, well, you didn't have to stand or anything at this point, right? Do you want to introduce yourselves and say, if you have children in the schools, and which ones?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Foley-Mohawbo. I have two sons who aren't in schools yet, but they will go to Z-School. I have one that will be starting in kindergarten next year, and then I have a two-year-old.
I'm Suzie Sislicke. I have Henry, who's, who's at Proctor right now, kindergarten. I have a three-year-old coming up, and then you may remember me, I brought my baby to the meeting this year. So she just turned one.
I'm Kelly Gannett. I have a kindergartner at Proctor, and I also have another daughter that's four, and she will be at Proctor next year, kindergarten.
I will say that we like to gather and chat about where we're headed with kindergarten, but the high point is always when Suzie brings the little one with her because she's a member of the committee, actually, no. And then we have two teachers with us that we're absolutely thrilled they're in the audience after a long day. Carrie Tuitt?
Hi, I'm Carrie Tuitt. I teach in kindergarten.
And?
And Stacy Cahill, also is our teacher at the school.
Great. Well, thank you all for being here this evening. I know it's been a long day. And we have a member of our school committee who has been present on almost every meeting, Simone.
Thank you.
And of course, our administrative team, all of our K5 principals have been involved in the conversations and the discussions that we've had. And so the slide is entitled "Exploring Tuition-Free Full Day Kindergarten," and that's really what this group has been doing over the last almost two years. And the intent always was for our work to culminate in a presentation this evening just to share with the committee some changes that have taken place in the kindergarten curriculum over time and the focus on the exploration of moving towards a free full-day kindergarten model. So what you have in front of you are some standard regulations. There are some misconceptions about what the Department of Ed requires for kindergarten, and so we've had discussions as part of the budget process as to whether we were going to have a separate full day, a half-full day, and that's usually where the conversations come up in terms of the configuration of the kindergarten model itself. So all school districts are required to provide a kindergarten education for all eligible children, and class size for kindergartners, usually the range, again, the average is 25. And kindergarten classes will certainly be taught by qualified and certified teachers, and we certainly have outstanding, highly qualified kindergarten teachers, all of which are licensed. Two of them are here tonight. As long as kindergarten students receive a minimum of 425 annual hours of structured learning, it's, it's fine for some to receive additional time if that's how the day is structured, depending on when the release is for kindergarten students. That's the requirement of the state. However, if a school does operate a full-day kindergarten program only, all parents would elect to send their children, well, it's not an election, it's a requirement, that they would send their students to the full-day program. The reason why half-day programs were very popular is that there was a need, a request by parents to offer a half-day program over the years, but more so, we were, and we were the recipients of a state grant, which really disappeared. It sunsetted after many false starts and stops in 2016 was the last year we received any grant funding, fiscal 2016. I'm hesitant on that because they did come out in '15 and say that the grant was going to be sunset. And because of a lot of great work, in part because of the school committees within our district requesting that that be extended, they did extend it for one more year. So basically, at this point, the kindergarten program is either supported fully by the operational budget, by tuition, or a combination of both, which is our model at the present time. Certain things that are probably not what we consider part of maybe a middle school or a high school day, but in kindergarten, it's okay to have playtime, snack time, cleanup time, and all of those things are, as one would imagine, considered very much structured learning time for kindergarten students, particularly when we're talking about the need for social, emotional well-being. We look at all those areas as well as language development, gross and fine motor skills. So let's take a brief PowerPoint tour of the changes that have taken place in a classroom. And you'll see some teaching and learning expectations. Those of us who may be able to remember the then of our own kindergarten experience will remember that if we were in kindergarten, the focus was on adjusting to a school day, and our focus was on learning letters and sounds, and to print letters, to count to 20, and we had no standardized testing. Now the focus is on all those things that we just mentioned, but also academics and preparing them well for first grade. So rather than learning letters and sounds, they read leveled text. Rather than printing letters, they're writing in complete sentences. Rather than counting to 20, they're counting to 100, and they're fluent in addition facts and some word problem solving. And for a time, this has changed somewhat, the state of Massachusetts was focused on something called the MKEA, which is the Massachusetts Kindergarten Entry Assessment, and it was a very intense program for our kindergarten teachers, a lot of mandated time for learning how to use this instrument and this tool. We had several false start, a full implementation, and then an ending, all within probably a three-year period. So full-day kindergarten, some highlights of full-day kindergarten. Provides four direct and longer blocks of uninterrupted time, which is very important for students as they begin to engage in a task and in an activity. Lot of time for intervention, as we know with the early ages, intervention, individualized instruction, certainly important at all the grades, but very much important at kindergarten with social, emotional adjustments to school and as well as academics. Provides additional time for programming for early childhood learners, including a lot of social interaction with their peer group. Again, that play, which is such an essential part of kindergarten in the early years and prepara, preparing for first grade, and then some center time to focus around different learning centers. It's some additional time to explore science and social studies, which we probably wouldn't think of in kindergarten in the then column, but certainly an important part of their academic experience. And then for independent practice, for them to learn to be self-guided and independent learners, skill development and ownership of their own learning. It also provides students an opportunity to do those experiential kinds of classroom experiences like art, music, computer, PE, and library, begins to pique their interest in targeted areas that they will continue to pursue and grow. I will also say that the audience is here because they are the experts in certainly raising kindergarten children at this age, but also the teachers and the administrators as we get to some specific questions and answers perhaps on the curriculum. So this is a very busy screen, very busy slide, and that's because kindergarten is very busy work and a lot of good work that takes place. And you think this is of the first-time experience for the youngsters coming into school, it, the world just opens up for them. And so as you look at the curriculum, there are focus areas, just like our strategic plan, and in kindergarten, the focus areas would be some prerequisites of learning, which is simply learning how to learn. It's very important at that age. To engage in differentiated instruction, explicit instruction, which includes phonemic awareness and center times to reinforce those concepts. Social, emotional learning, again, which is developing a community of learners and peers. That play is work, play is hard work, and an important part of the kindergarten program. The curriculum includes math blocks and those special areas that we just talked a little bit about. The science fundamentals, which as we know from our conversations here, the science curriculum continues to be an area of focus for us with the new standards, the next-generation standards that have been released. And then an uninterrupted literacy block. So a lot of work taking place. So another visual for the slide that we just shared is actually how do you put all that time into that period of time in a day? And so this is really what you see in front of you is what is considered to be the comprehensive kindergarten learning model as a standard. So here are some kindergarten by the numbers, and this is updated, it's a Massachusetts statewide snapshot, a little bit of enlightening information. So there are 317 districts that offer kindergarten. Only two districts offer only half-day K. There are 274 districts that offer full-day kindergarten. And the number of children, and I think this is, they're coming our way, 62,656. And in our two, in our district in Northborough, what's interesting is that we track very close to Nezdek's numbers, not so much to the census, but definitely to Nezdek. And for the majority of the enrollment stats that we've reviewed, for the most part, those students who are enrolled in kindergarten percentage-wise are also in our first grade. So we're not, there's, there's not a great imbalance of the student, the numbers of students that are in our kindergarten program and the number that enroll. The number of children that are enrolled in half-day kindergarten is about 5% or 3,400 students, and the number of districts that offer full-day kindergarten and charge tuition is 56 of the 317. So the percentage of districts that offer free full-day kindergarten is 82.3. This fluctuates. The average tuition across the state is 3,461, and the Northborough tuition is 3,250, which has been the same since the 2014-15 school year. It was a graduated increase over time. In '12 and '13, it was 3,000. So this is an interesting map. This is a map of Massachusetts. The white area are the free full-day K communities that you see. I think you all have the colored version, so it's easier to see. And then you'll see the communities that have charged, that charge tuition and the amount. And what's interesting is the white area is very much proportionate to the amount of funding that they may have received when the kindergarten grant was in full swing. So over a period of time, when that kindergarten grant was authored, the numbers originally were a lot higher, and the intent to the grant was for districts to slowly transition to a free full-day kindergarten. Some districts were able, for whatever reason, to make that work, but there's a predominance of districts actually in the metro west towards Boston that are still charging tuition. But this chart, we took a look at this two years ago, and it's changed in two years. So the number of free full-day K towns has increased in that period of time.
Did you, sorry, it fits in there. Did you, have you seen anything yet on district performance and full-free day? The overall performance, educational performance in districts?
The state, it doesn't seem to, that I, we were able to come across...
It's kind of new, too.
Yeah, and I haven't seen anything that actually tracks the kindergarten performance as it relates to first-grade performance, as to whether are those students attended the full day or the half-day. We do know that the measurable difference, the measurable difference in terms of performance, we've, excuse me, we've tracked in another district, not this one yet, the results of the students MCAS in third and fourth grade, to see if there was a significant difference. Because our population of half-day students is so small, that may in fact skew the end result because we did not see a measurable difference, but we don't have significant numbers either for half-day-only students. But that's a, that's a good point. And MKEA didn't survive long enough to give us any data that would have proved meaningful in that analysis. So that's a, that's an excellent point and well worth the investigation to see what we might, we might use. So here's Northborough kindergarten projections from now, '18 to FY '24. Next year will prove to be an interesting year because Nezdek has us projected higher than past enrollment, so if we haul true-to-form to a point made earlier, we're going to make sure that we have that conversation when we talk about staffing as we move forward. So that's just a snapshot. And then this is a snapshot of the enrollment kindergarten to grade one, and it's historical, but it does show that, you know, the ratio of students who moved to first grade who would have been in full or half-day in the previous year when they were kindergarten students. So why are, why are school districts not moving to a free full-day kindergarten? It's costly. And so one of the things that we know is that in any given year, to fully absorb the amount that is charged now and realized through tuition is fairly significant. If we look at the first line in 2018, and these are rough numbers, but I think this is more of a... and these are rough numbers, but I think this is more of a conceptual discussion than it is a specific actual dollars, because it does continue to change. The amount that we actually collect, for example, each year versus what is bailed out may be different. But roughly, at this point in 2018, assuming that we had 132 students by Nezdek projections, and based on past percentage, we assume that we have 116 that would be paying full tuition rate. With eight teachers and four aides, projecting our cost, we know that about, it's a 51% on budget. So, $394,140 is on budget. There's some flexibility there, because things change on a daily basis. And so, we're collecting, or we're invoicing, charging $379,634 in tuition. So basically, we have zero invested in that. The point of tuition revolving is to expend it, right? It sits in a revolving account. So about 51% is on budget. So this just is sort of a conceptual model in terms of what would happen if we transitioned to a full-free-day K model over time. And you'll note, in 2023, we still aren't quite there yet, right? And in some years, because of the projections, we've increased staff for class-size enrollments to nine. We don't know if that's going to be a reality. And if it isn't, of course, then that reduces the overall cost to run the program. And so, this shows a little bit of a transition as we move forward for conversation, as we begin to discuss budget priorities. And we made some assumptions about costs, the teacher and aides, and assuming an annual increase of a 2% cola. So as much as I've presented these tonight, it could change next week. But the notion of what a transitioning model would look like is something like this. So, one of the things that a kindergarten model offers in Northborough, as we've discussed and it's sort of summarized here, is really just opportunity for growth and learning for students at our youngest entry point. A lot of conversation has taken place about, you know, why would we even want to move to a free full-day model when we have tuition and folks are still participating in the program? So, we've gone back and forth, not only in this district, but other districts as well. And I guess what it really does come down to is a philosophy of the district, in terms of what is its educational system and what does it want to support. So, it's been some time since I've heard anyone refer to public education as grades one through 12. When we talk, and of course now, we oftentimes refer to it as pre-K 12. Sometimes pre-K 14 or 16, depending what we refer to the college readiness on the other end. But it is a philosophy, it is a conversation, I think that we should visit in our district. We have not had this conversation for a number of years. And an argument has also been presented that, well, you know, we can charge, so why wouldn't we charge? And so, the discussion point is also, because there are certain programs that we offer now, and our operational budget actually covers the cost of those programs, sometimes athletics, sometimes co-curricula programs, sometimes art and music, depending on which year and which standards we're aligning to. We, as a school district, do not describe those as sort of extra. And we do not describe those as things that are other than the comprehensive education we feel is appropriate to provide all students. And so, it is true that we could also charge for those experiences as well. But we feel that that is part of our mission and part of the definition of providing a highly qualified educational experience in our community. It's a very difficult conversation to have. If you look at the, if we back up and look at the amount of tuition revolving funds that we do collect in this community, that's probably about 50% of the overall increase that we had last year on our K-8 budget. So the likelihood and the ability to be able to absorb that in any given school year without having a detrimental effect on other programs that we offer is not very high.
And a ripple effect to the town.
And a ripple effect.
So it's all the other town departments that depend on this, too.
So I want to give a positive shout-out to the folks who have been part of this study group for some time. I think that the appreciation for the importance, the collaboration that we enjoy with our community, and the appreciation that kindergarten is one grade and there are, you know, eight other grades that need to be funded and considered each year is definitely part of our conversation. And that's why, sort of a discussion around, what can we do to transition? And whether or not we want that to become part of our conversation moving forward is an appropriate dialogue to engage in. So.
Go ahead.
I would love to share that, I'm thrilled. I've never been one to, even though we can charge the tuition, it pained me in the past to vote for increases in the tuition rate. And before your time, it had been expressed to school committee members, well, this is what neighboring towns are charging for kindergarten tuition. And never have we had this kind of data. And since I've been a school committee member in over six years, I've not seen this kind of data presented to us where it actually showed how many other communities only offer full-day kindergarten, and how many of them are offering it tuition-free. And I think it just makes the best budget sense not to do it so dramatically, but to do it as a transition and implement it over time and going down. And applaud everyone's input, and this presentation information is fantastic. And I'd love to hear from my fellow committee members on their feelings on the transition.
I echo your sentiment, ten minutes of that, with being on the committee and going through the process, in that I really just, that map really does kind of sell it for me when you see the rest of the state and how we're not doing. And that's what the kindergarten grant was intended for and its purpose. And we just haven't quite got there. I know we've got some fiscal limitations, but I think we should definitely look into it and see how we can move forward, and like Patty said, in transitional type of way. I do agree, it is not necessarily a one-and-you're-done situation, but I just agree that it is best to second.
Oh, no, no.
So I was involved in the process and very much like that it has come forward to this point to discuss.
Thank you for representing the committee. I know that was a lot of, it's a lot of work to take out of your regular day to attend meetings during the day.
So, I may be so bold to presume something. So is it the recommendation of the committee that we look to implement this? Or is this just a starting point for the discussion of the transitioning plan? Or is this, would this be the framework for what that would look like?
We need to take a vote on the tuition. But it certainly wouldn't be at this point, anyway.
No, 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 this is preliminary.
This is something that will come down the line when we have deeper discussions on our budget for fiscal year 19.
Would we, if we decided to adopt, let's say, something similar to this plan, if not this plan right here, that would be a vote probably prior to the budget? Because it would have an impact on the budget? I'm just thinking.
Process, what would the process?
What would the process, what would that look like?
So this is interesting, because on this, we have some experience at the moment. Because we are going through a similar process in the other borough. And.
You can say it.
It was after, they were about a year ahead of us in Northborough, simply because the conversation was brought forward sooner. And we did a lot of discussion and a lot of preliminary dialogue and lots of subcommittee or study group meetings, where school committee was also present. And we had some very difficult conversations about, are we positioned to do this? And so, the strategy that we've employed, the process, is what are the other needs in any given school year?
Right.
Where do they fall in terms of priority? Case, a good example. There are new science standards. To implement the new science curriculum is at a significant class for instructional resources. That affects all grades, and the students are having the best time with science. Again, thank you, Greg Martineau, for spearheading that initiative. And that's part of a budget conversation which continues to be ongoing to fund the full implementation of the science curriculum across all the grades. So that would be a significant priority. And so, it depends on the reality of the financial situation each year. And so, they've moved forward with the argument that there is no time limit, that it will be discussed as part of the budget priority and part of the budget process. And there will be no prescribed dollar reduction in the tuition, because there's sort of that balance, right? As one goes up, the other goes down. And there's no guarantee that all of the money that might have been in the tuition revolving account would be sort of equally spent. In other words, there isn't a complete one-to-one ratio in terms of how much we collect and how much we move on operational. Because to expend all of the tuition collected leaves either the operational in a potential deficit, because if more children arrive and we have to hire a teacher and we budget it so close to the dollar, we wouldn't be able to move. Something else would have to go. So we've got sort of this great flexibility. And with that, last year, we moved forward and we were able to reduce the tuition. However, the letter that was sent this summer clearly said, this was what we did this year, we don't know where we are next year. But the commitment has been to do it in such a strategic, thoughtful manner that we wouldn't be yo-yoing. We wouldn't go back and say, okay, now we're going to put that tuition back up. So, it isn't that prescribed. But that's been the process of the conversations that have taken place. And this year, the conversations, because we're in the middle of budget or starting the budget season, the fact that we made this decision becomes now part of our conversation almost at every school committee meeting. We're looking at the kindergarten numbers. We're having the conversation about the other fiscal priorities. I will say that when, and I don't want to speak for the building principals, because they can certainly speak for themselves, hello, that when we did sit down K-8, we prioritized, just as I shared the budget priority draft last month. That's part of an administrative conversation. And so, for me to actually do just work, it is for me to have that conversation also with the administrative team and ask what is important and what they prioritize. And so, that discussion about when kindergarten is prioritized as an actual budget expenditure in any given year is also part of a bigger conversation with the leadership team. Does that make sense, this process?
Mm-hmm.
It was a long way to get to the end, but it's a complicated.
And when would parents be notified what the tuition would be for a given year? Would that go out with registration notification?
It can't, because we don't know what the budgets are. So what we decided, and we certainly worked with the business office, is because we always collect half the tuition, that doesn't change. So the letters went out that this is half the tuition, and there was a lot of conversation about the second half may change. So actually, the letter that I sent was probably in July, July or August.
So we do an estimate, figure out what half would be, and then square it up with the second half?
We based the half on the current tuition. And then if there were to be a reduction, when all was said and done, when the governor announced his budget and we had, you know, all of the numbers, we then sent the letter. Because the second would never, would at least be that amount in full or somewhat less. And it ended up being somewhat less. And that worked. And so, we would do the same this year, because we really can't tell what the reduction would be until we have all the numbers to work with.
Was there a starting point similar or the same as ours for tuition?
Their tuition rate is the same.
Right.
Yeah. The percentage was slightly higher on budget when we started, slightly higher. But in the end, we're all trying to get to the same place. And because of the number of students that participate in the kindergarten program, percentage-wise, the amount, or the actual dollars on budget, and therefore then the percentage, versus how much, what our reliance was on tuition was different. Because their cost to run the kindergarten program is different. It's lower than Northborough's, because we have more students. But conceptually, it's the same model. I will add one other variable. You know, it's good to control your own destiny. And as we know from the conversation with MKEA, we have no idea what Desi's destiny is for us. You know, there was a three-year intense program. It was a lot of time invested by our, you know, teachers who would have much preferred to be in the classroom working with our students. And so, there are and there have been bills in the House for universal preschool and universal kindergarten. So it is entirely possible, and I'm not suggesting that this is going to happen tomorrow or two years from now, but the state does what the state does. There is a bill on high now in the House for universal kindergarten. So, being at least mindful of this and where we are with the kindergarten program enlightens us all such that if a bill were to be passed, we know what our cost basis is. Particularly if they tell the districts, you need to move to full-day K, free.
Without funding.
Without funding.
Well, if every student had to go.
Unfunded.
If every student had to go full-day, wouldn't there be an increase in Chapter 70 funds?
No. And this, I say most emphatically, because we were quite disappointed about this. So as part of the research that we did, and that was a huge part of the conversation when we investigated and explored more deeply and researched the numbers, Northborough finds itself in a wonderful position of being held harmless with Chapter 70 dollars. And what that means is, as we saw a declining enrollment over time, which we have had, Chapter 70 was never reduced. So after we engaged in a couple conference calls.
Yes, we did.
Cheryl and I both looked at one another and said, oh, I don't probably think we should have this conversation any longer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that is.
So unless they change, unless the Foundation Review Commission, which we'll learn more about, MAS, MAS-C this week.
Yes.
Seventy Minutes for 70 Points of Chapter 70. That's how they're promoting this. Unless we learn something from this that suggests that we will no longer be held harmless with Chapter 78 and we will then get more, then there's no advantage. Unlike a neighboring district, which was used, Hopkinton, as a reference. Hopkinton had a significant number of half-day students. Significant, such that when they change to full-day, they did see a realized benefit. We don't have those same numbers, so we're not in the same situation. And we did do our due diligence and said, we're just going to walk away from this conversation, because there's no advantage to continuing.
So because of the correlation with our other agenda item under old business, is it okay with committee members if I move that up so that we can discuss the MAS-C, NAS-S joint conference and the one sole issue that our delegate will be voting on? So you will bring, if the topic of Chapter 70 funds in regards to kindergarten comes up, you now know the position of this committee in regards to our desire for extra Chapter 70 funds for kindergarten?
You got it.
Is that the general consensus? Is there any opposition to that? I don't want to limit. As I mentioned before, I'm very grateful that you're going as our delegate and that you will be voting on our behalf. You do plan to still attend, correct?
Yeah, I'll do it.
So Madam Chair, where do we go from here? I think that, you know, so we've opened the door for the conversation. And if there's a. And if there's additional information, there's some additional resources on the screen. But if there's some specific questions that any of the committee members have, please send them my way. And I, I'm sure we will be meeting again, the study group, and we can bring this back and continue to have this conversation, whether it happens this year or whether this is the introduction year and we move forward with that being part of our, you know, priorities for next year. And I'm just happy that we're having this conversation and revisiting the notion of how very much important kindergarten is and how very much fundamental it is to our educational system in Northborough.
Thank you. I, myself, I would love to see it come back so we can vote on the reduction tuition. But that would have to be after, you know, that we shouldn't, that shouldn't be something that we rush into. We need to learn, understand other aspects of the budget and we haven't even gotten into those talk chat.
Right.
And I'd like to thank the committee for the work that they're doing so.
Thank you.
I give them a round of applause.
Yes, they definitely deserve a applause. Thank you.
This is very productive for us, so thank you.
Very productive and informative.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, so we transition now to the next agenda item.
Do you want to stay one more on new business or do you want to...
Uh, well, let's wrap up new business and then we...
Yeah.
Unless we need to continue with old business.
Just to finish with that.
Yeah, let's finish with new business. Lights? Camera action, I think this is, I think that's it.
Let's turn it on. Sue, can you shut me down?
It's flasher.
I knew, I just handed you that too.
Michelle can do it.
Just power me down.
There you go.
Crack.
Thanks. So great, another great agenda item of approval of donations and grants.
Yay. Oh, Sue.
Sure.
Now that you've successfully powered me down, I'm going to hand this back over to you because this is an annual celebration.
Very good. We are in a situation this year again with the Fitzgerald family offering to fund the tuitions for five of our staff members to attend the conference for the Massachusetts Down Syndrome Congress in a couple of weeks. So we would very much love for you to approve that donation of $2,500 from Bill and Christine Fitzgerald. This will allow us to send a classroom teacher, special education teacher, occupational therapist and two aides, two instructional aides to attend the session for one of the days and then be able to bring those strategies into our school to work with some of our students. I'm sorry, I missed the dollar amount, $2,500.
Chair, I move that we approve the donation from the Fitzgerald family to the Z School in the amount of $2,500.
Seconded. Seconded, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Please bring the family our thanks and our gratitude. We've been very thankful for them to make this donation to the district.
As are we. And I think this is his third year of doing this for us, so he's been really very helpful just in expanding our strategies for working with students at our schools.
Agreed?
Thank you.
Thank you. So we already discussed old business. I'm going to move over unless there's any further discussion. And again, Mr. Kane, I'm very grateful. Thank you for taking the time out of your busy life to attend on our behalf and our members at this table attending.
Yes, Mr. Martinow, I think we're, car's gassed up and we're ready to go. I would say that if you're not able to, to attend, last night I stumbled across the app for that. And there is an app that you can download for free at the App Store and it'll share with you all of the things that are happening at the conference. Who's speaking, what presentations are taking place.
I think presentations are available online as well, so even if you can't attend, you can go on and see the, all the different topics for the different seminars and pull down all that, all that.
Fantastic. It's just MASC.
Is it at.org?
No, I, it's just MASC.
Yes.
Google that and you can just download it.
Great, well, thanks again and safe traveling to the Cape. We'll move on to superintendent's report to the committee.
Enrollments are in your packet, Madam Chair, and there are no significant changes from MASC once we fluctuate here and there, but for the most part, they're holding steady. Again, we know this will be a big part of our conversations in the next month or so.
Yep. Any comments or questions, concerns from committee members? So we move on to fiscal year 18, monthly general fund expenditure report.
So I, I just have to take a moment and look to my left and say, Cheryl, this is probably the last November expenditure report that you'll be...
The earlier in the year, the easier they are, how's that?
Do you want to ask them for a vote, one more time?
Sure. A vote to approve until audited is appreciated.
Madam Chair, so moved.
Seconded. Seconded, my Susan. All in favor?
Thanks for Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl, for your work on this report and the hundreds and hundreds of other ones. And our fiscal year 19, capital improvement plan.
So I believe this was in draft form last month. It's in draft form this month. I believe that this and the budget goals were held. I did, well, I didn't speak, but we exchanged a few emails today. Town manager was away last week on business and I, we did touch base today. He is still appreciative of the fact that we want to move the busy boiler forward. However, it's early on his, the work that he has to do as well. I have no doubt that we'll be meeting between now and our December meeting and have a clear understanding of that. So I think if we did want to consider this evening taking a vote on this, I can at least bring this forward and say the committee has approved this as our target.
As a recommended?
Yeah.
Or requested, I guess would be the better word.
We can, we can vote to approve the capital improvement plan as presented this evening. There's nothing to say that we can't go back and amend.
Amend if necessary.
Amend if necessary. Did I, does that mean you're willing to make the motion?
I'll move.
Okay.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Questions come? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you.
So now our Northborough School Committee approved capital improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we did bring forward some budget goals last month, some great discussions with the, our outstanding administrative team across the way. And we did make some suggestions and modifications to last year's, so you'll see that reflected in red. I'm sure in the back of our minds at this point, there might be consideration about what about kindergarten presentation that we just had. I think it might be a little premature to add that to a budget priority this year, but certainly, you know, it's, it's at the table for conversation and we may want to consider that for next year's priorities, but with some more information to follow between now and, you know, when we're at this point next year. So this is really the discussion that we had. We did have a preliminary conversation next week, last month, and I think it was Mr. Kane that suggested we move this forward this week. Where we can take a look at.
So a big concern that I have is, well, I love, first I'll say I love the first policy. The second policy I really love as well because I think it clarifies the fact that we want to have an instructional-based classroom. And even if you introduce models of e-learning or video or virtual learning, which is Mr. Olson does a great job implementing those in his classroom, it's still such, such a value. You need to have educator in the classroom to stop, to explain in real time with the students in the class. My concern is with number three. I, I think it's too big to be one goal. We've, we talked a lot tonight about the importance of having social emotional programs. But I also think that providing the professional development and so the professional learning communities that we discussed this evening as well, and having these professional development opportunities for staff is also so important. I'd like to see them as two separate goals, myself. How do my fellow committee members feel about that?
What would be the two?
Um, well, I could use some help on that.
But both of them, it's, it's a two-pronged approach for supporting social emotional health of children. So programs like the Zen Room, but also coupled with the professional development. It's, it takes both those into account. So social emotional development is kind of one bullet point.
So in the...
Breaking out the professional development as its own...
As a separate entity?
Yeah. In that it covers both the two, the research-based instructional classroom and social...
Yeah, because we had last year provide programs and staffing to meet the social and emotional health of all children.
So can I give some definition to the conversations that we had? So I think Alana's presentation, although unplanned to do so, brought life to the, both of these bullets. And so what it really means is last year and the year before, and I think even the year before that, because we slowly moved the actual positions in the budget over a period of time. We have the staff. We need to continue the investment in the programs that we brought in, but more importantly, to expend the dollars in the rich professional development that's going to give those new positions that have been hired or the positions that we have in place, the people in those positions. And also the programs that we can, we've brought into our district, the tools they need to maximize the resources that we have and to bring about the success that we hope to achieve, which is student growth and well-being. So to, we have the programs, we have the people, now we need to make sure they all come together and we're investing in the people so they can maximize the programs that are in place.
But why limit professional development to just those programs?
So this is specific to those programs because it is a targeted area? It doesn't mean that we won't be doing professional development in other areas. It means that in the budget, in the translation of the budget, you may see a growth in the professional develop line items. And that isn't because we're not still providing that richness of PD experiences that we, that Greg presented earlier this year. Those are still going on, but this is above that. This is additional funding that we need to really, again, invest in the programs and the people that we have in the area of social emotional growth. So there's a baseline in professional development that we will always have in our district. It's what we do, it's what we've done for years. And contractually, it's also what we need to provide in terms of, you know, what are we doing on professional development days and how are we becoming more innovative as a district? So that's sort of the core funding. But now we know that we have and we want to put a greater emphasis on training in the, in the social emotional area. So if I were to present a budget to you and you would see a line item increase in that, that's what it would be for, as opposed to the PD that we offer, because that will continue.
But isn't there only one PD line item?
Actually, our PD line item is minimal in that most of our Title II-A grant pays for the professional development in the district. And where you might see money in the line items for PD is in the R&amp;D curriculum, R&amp;D line item, which is a district line item. You might see a nominal amount at the school level for professional development for people to go to conferences. And you might see there's a curriculum line item and that's where you'd see the professional development in the budget. Some of that money actually funds our curriculum coordinators, the stipend that they're paid. So there's, it's, it's in several different places. So if I were to bring this forward, you'll see an increase in probably the curriculum R&amp;D line item. And that would be for these specific targeted focus areas. I mean, it's the will of the committee. I just want to explain why it's in there and worded as it is, because it is a specific focus on social emotional learning.
Well, in providing a focus, we have the grant at the middle school level for the at-risk program that, again, it is assumed that we will take that on into the budget and incorporate that over three years. So just noting it and highlighting it that the social emotional health is a data point in our policy. Again, that covers a myriad of things, including that. So I don't think, I don't think we, again, just for me, I don't think we need to break it out as two bullet points. They both promote the focus of that objective.
I mean, if, if we could say expand professional development for all teachers with an emphasis on providing support for programs, professional development in the, for the social, to support the social emotional health of all children.
I like that.
And so we can, we can word that, so it's sort of...
I like that better.
I have to watch the tape to see what it is I said.
Okay, because that was perfect. That was really good.
If it was good, then I will take it off the tape, put it in here and be good to go.
Right, that was good, exactly that. And...
And this emphasis on data gathering, that's just best practice, is that under there? Because that is a big emphasis.
Absolutely.
Proctor Plan.
And I think you'll see it as a reoccurring theme and some of that PD is around the ability to analyze data.
And we, and that was mentioned this evening as well. I just brought up with the professional learning communities. I mean, it can be PD time to analyze data.
And it is possible then, as we do when we present the budget, to sort of be more specific around the increase, if that was going to be an increase in the budget recommended for FY19. We can sort of articulate what we're going to, what some of our target areas are.
So any other input, questions, comments on the, on the goals? Do you, do you need a vote tonight?
No.
No, we can play it back.
If you're comfortable seeing, stating back, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to see it with that language.
That's fine.
On the second read?
Or third read?
Third read, whatever.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Modification for modification.
I wish, I wish I had written it down, but I, I love that additional language for that.
Should we have a vote on it?
Yeah.
Fantastic. All right, so...
As long as Terry captured that, we'll be all set.
Terry, yeah.
Oh, so, thank you. All right, next item is the fiscal year 19 budget calendar.
It grows. And so looking to see if we had a meeting, we had a November 1st. We're still, Matt's ramping up quickly on the budget process and I know everyone's crunching numbers, but so far, there has not been an addition this month. We just, did we, it seems like we just met, but no, we didn't. Certainly does.
So that wraps up the superintendent's report, unless there are any further questions or comments on the calendar, budget calendar. All right, okay, then we'll move on to educational policy. There is none at this time. Policy development.
Second read, Madam Chair.
I noticed, I noticed the changes that I requested. I'm very happy.
Minor edits, but important edits.
There's still a minor one on the, oh, well, we'll go in order. On B-150, oh, this is, this is review, so this is no changes, no vote needed?
Second readings.
Oh, it's the second read on B-150.
Yep, we have all, I know the second read.
Oh, so the change in the policy, so the change, I remember now, we discussed this last month in regards to the change with the subcommittee perhaps holding the meeting for the tour and not making that subcommittee be the capital planning subcommittee. I'm fine with that.
And we removed the listing of the people and left it up to the town administrator... And we removed the listing of the people and left it up to the town administrator to invite whoever he or she would choose.
That's right. And we recall that, that the superintendent is responsible for the coordination of visits to the town. I like that new wording. Was there any other? Can we-
On that one?
Yeah. So, we have a motion to approve.
Want to approve these?
Well, this one, let's do this one.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
If there are no other changes.
Yeah. I vote that the committee moved to, I'm sorry, I moved as a committee vote to approve the B-150 inspection of buildings and grounds as presented.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Nope, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, another one down. B-180, agenda and order of business.
Oh, I remember you wanted to articulate the order as it is on our agenda. So, we ordered some of the items, and we cleaned up a couple of, so financial report moved down. We added new business up on the agenda, so it sort of follows what we've been practicing at our meetings.
Yeah, we added the open meeting law citation at the bottom. Make sure we're legal.
Good, I love it. All right, and motion?
Do we accept the agenda and order of business, B-180, as presented?
Right. Second, all in favor? And just as our order of business on the B-150, it does seem that we do title and then the number of the, um, policy number, so on the first one, if we move forward with the-
It's different.
Yeah, if we move forward with the one from this evening, I think we should keep the, um-
It actually was that way on the, the original.
It was?
With the title, and then, then the number.
Yeah, it just got mixed.
It just got-
Right, it just got switched somehow on the revision. See at the top?
No.
No, sorry, I went back to the previous one that we already approved.
Oh, the title changed, yeah.
Topic first, and then the-
It doesn't change the policy, it's just the title.
Right.
And B-180?
We took special meeting now.
Beautiful. Um, B-230, the only, I'm so happy that you changed Marie's title. It's accurate now, right? And the only other thing is, it's really small, but on that paragraph, it says special education issues should be forwarded by the, I think for consistency's sake, it should still, it should be as it is in other areas, parent slash parent, yes, yes.
And that was changed, we're looking at the red line. And we added please contact the school principal instead of brought to the attention of-
Yeah.
And guardians, parents and guardians are on the bottom. And we took off four in appointment.
Yeah.
Make contact instead of call.
So, I don't know if committee members want to approve with the change, or if we should just have it come back next one?
Let's approve with the, with the amendment noted.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm fine with that. Is that your motion?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
So moved.
Second by key, all those are favor. Unanimous to approve the policy, B-230, as presented tonight with one small correction.
So, with the red line in front of me, I can quickly go through the changes from last month to this month.
On, wait, on B-230?
On J-260.
Oh, on J-260, okay.
That's the one, I think that's-
We are moving on to J-260, you're ahead of me. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, in the second paragraph, we crossed out the following, and just started with these rules are, these rules are follow, or these rules follow.
So, make it a lowercase t?
Yep. No change on the first bullet, no change on the second bullet. The third bullet, anyone picking up a student from school must come to, we changed it to visit the school office to be, to identify by the child, be identified by the child. For the last bullet, for safety reasons, a student should wait at the office until their ride comes instead of his slash her.
In the note?
It no longer says students, it says parents slash guardians should discuss with their students and make arrangements. We crossed out set up with their parents or guardians. And instead of what to do in case, it just says what to do in the event of an emergency for early school closing, period. And we eliminated when no one is at home. So, those were the suggestions made last month.
Good. Motion?
Moving to accept student dismissal, policy J-260, as presented with the lowercase t.
Second by Susan, all in favor?
This is great.
Good, we got a bunch of votes.
This is the earliest we have all these policies.
This is good, good job, everyone. Could someone please remind me when the next policy subcommittee meeting is?
Me too.
I know it's in November, it's the third week or-
It's coming up.
It's around the second week in November. For some reason, that's sticking out.
Combined policy-
Was it?
Oh, okay, combined policy is when?
Thirteenth.
Of November, November thirteenth?
November thirteenth, which is a Monday at six o'clock.
Six P, six PM?
Six PM.
PM, okay. Thank you. And-
And Northborough's is Thursday. Sixteenth, at eight thirty AM.
Wow.
November sixteenth, at eight thirty.
Sixteenth, so that what time, again, six thirty?
Eight thirty.
Oh, eight thirty in the morning, eight thirty AM.
Till ten thirty.
Ah, so, poor Northborough policy folks, double duty that week. Thank you. All right, now we come to the most wonderful part of the agenda, audience sharing. Anyone? No? All right, we'll go back if you change, should change your mind. Principals?
I've shared a lot, so it would be very brief, but just a couple of items for November that, um, we are, we have our annual turkey trot, the week of the thirteenth, the seventeenth, so students in their PE classes complete laps, and they have some fun obstacle-type things that they do, and we collect donations for the Northborough Food Pantry, so we're hoping to collect at least five hundred items this year. Last year, we had well over that, so we're hoping to stay consistent with that. So, if you'd like to come down that week and run some laps and donate some dried or canned goods, we would welcome you to come visit us. We're also collecting candy for the troops following Halloween, so if you have that extra Halloween candy that you don't want hanging around your house, we have a direct contact that's serving overseas, so we're mailing it directly to that person who's going to disperse it to the people that he is in charge of, and we're also sending letters, all the classrooms are writing letters as well. So, that's all going to be sent over. And we are also going to be doing a grateful project in November, so I'll report on that when we come back in December.
Thank you.
And I wanted to report back to you about the ed camp that we had at Peaslee School. The upper wing teachers and parents developed nineteen different choices for children to select from, and they ranged from things that had to do with writing, to art, to science, to using technology, to sports, and then a few other things. And I have to show you, they, they came up with this, this is a nice little cover sheet here, and then they had a map of all the different sessions, so what time they were, what room they were in, where children would go from one to the other, because all children could choose two things to go to. And it occurred on Friday, the thirteenth, and it was a resounding success. The kids had an absolutely phenomenal time, and I think every parent who came in to see it or to participate had probably more fun than the kids did, so it was really exciting. And I just wanted to thank all the teachers and parents who put so much time and effort into putting that together. Tomorrow, if you're around, we are celebrating Halloween with our annual parade, and in the afternoon, we have our annual Halloween concert, which is performed by Hit the Bus, who are always very popular at Peaslee School. We all have parent conferences coming up next week at the K-25 schools, so those are Monday and Wednesday, afternoons and evenings. And Peaslee has our annual kids fair on Friday, November seventeenth, in the evening, so if you want to come and play some games or make some artwork, then please feel free to join us. Love to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we obviously will be celebrating Halloween tomorrow as well. We have our parade. We will start the day, to be fair, with a walk and bike to school so that the children can get a little bit of energy out, so we'll be starting with that. We will have our parade at two o'clock. We have partnered with the UNICEF Club at Algonquin, so we will be, those students who choose to will be trick-or-treating for UNICEF under the guidance of the UNICEF Club at Algonquin, so they are doing a second year of collecting for UNICEF, so we're pleased with that. We have our amazing coffee house this coming Friday evening, so if you are free and want to see some of the best talent in town, six thirty PM, first act goes on. If I'm right, it'll probably be somewhere between thirty and forty acts, so it'll be a great evening of kids performing. I was watching some of the rehearsals today, and the kids definitely take lots of risks to get up there to dance, to sing, to do comedy stuff, but it's probably the highlight of the performing season at the Z-School. Next Thursday, we will be celebrating and recognizing Veterans Day with the program at nine thirty, with one of the color cards coming, invited guests of local veterans, parents who are veterans. We are doing a thanks to Yanks drive for the homeless veterans as part of that. And then finally, we have our Thanksgiving walk and bike to school on the twenty-first. I will say that in December, we are focusing our energy on the concept of being kind through the studying of the book Wonder, and then the picture book accompaniment to Wonder called We're All Wonder, so that will be a school-wide read for us, so.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to extend a thanks to the Lincoln Street PTO and our faculty for two successful events that have just taken place. One is our Stories in Sundays, where staff members come in in the evening and read to students, and Peter Rolson, who's here tonight, was one of our readers, and that went well. And this past Saturday, the PTO ran their largest fundraising slash fun event, I saw you there, Mrs. Cress, with a lot of events for children, and it was a great day. Tomorrow, like my colleagues' schools, we are recognizing Halloween with a walk to Whitney Place in Beaumont Center by our third through fifth graders. It's our third year of partnering with them on Halloween, and our students are looking forward to that, followed by our annual Halloween parade, which families are invited to at two fifteen tomorrow. We are also celebrating and recognizing our veterans on Wednesday, November eighth, at nine AM, as has been a Lincoln Street School tradition. Also, to echo what Sue was talking about, our school has also placed a focus on empathy and kindness this year. Historically, our fourth grade has read the book Wonder also, and this year, our librarian has paired with Solomon Pond Theater for a special Lincoln Street School showing of Wonder on November seventeenth, which is a Saturday morning, so we, we will get to see that. They've got a hundred and forty-eight seats saved for Lincoln Street in a theater where we'll be able to share the movie and extend the theme. It's about a, a book about a child with a pretty significant physical disability, so we're looking forward to that and to continuing with several other events over the course of the year to recognize our efforts towards empathy.
Thank you.
We had our parent-teacher conferences last week, and they went very well, so it was a long week for our teachers, but we always enjoy welcoming parents in, so that was great. We will not be celebrating Halloween tomorrow. You will tell them to be safe on the announcements, and we'll deal with the candy the next day, but no. I have to also thank our PTO, their annual fundraiser just concluded, and I think the numbers are around fourteen thousand, so they exceeded their goal. They're hoping for a little bit more to trickle in, so it's a lot of work, they put in a lot of time, so I have to thank them. Our student council collected Halloween candy to donate to WIME and Sherry's House, as well as to the Central Mass Shelter for veterans. Students in our Spanish classes are collecting school supplies for children in Guatemala. Our inter-scholastic fall sports have concluded, cross-country and field hockey seasons, with the exception of one cross-country Central Mass Invitational meet this Wednesday for students who qualified. And our after-school activities are amping up, so this year, along with some of our regular clubs, like Minecraft Club, Model United Nations, Coleman House Buddies, we have some new clubs, which is, is exciting. It's always fun to, to see the kids and them engaged after school. So, we have a remote control car club and a kindness club, along with a lot of others. But often, we have students who want to start a club, and there are, you know, eight or nine students in our remote control car club, so they just found a teacher who was willing to stay with them, so it's, it's great that we're able to offer extra activities for kids after school. November sixteenth, we are having a sixth grade open mic night for students with their ukulele, so the NEF, with the help of the NEF, music teachers in the district were able to get ukuleles, so if you want to hear some ukuleles and some singing, November sixteenth, from six to seven thirty, so we're excited about that.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Never a dull moment, right?
Okay. Members, you good? Pass. Open it to the send. All right, audience, last chance. All right, on the end, audience sharing. Move on to personnel items.
Personnel reports in your packet.
Packet. Distribution of school news letters, communications, the If Only flyer, it's been discussed. I've heard, I know at the Algonquin PTO meeting, it was discussed, and it was clarified to me that this is not school-sponsored.
This is not a school-sponsored event, however, we do encourage parents to attend. It is part of our speaker series. We were able to collaborate with them to invite them in. It is a very powerful presentation. There will be booths and informational tables for parents from six to seven. Assistant DA Early will be bringing his, or DA Early will be bringing in his, that was a, District Attorney Early will be bringing in Hidden in Plain Sight, which is a very eye-opening exhibit that will provide a lot of information with respect to what might be hiding not in plain sight in a student's room, in a child's room. And then, there will be a viewing of the Wahlberg Foundation's presentation of If Only. This is all sponsored by the Northborough-Southborough Substance Abuse Coalition, which is really a collaboration of a lot of folks throughout our communities who are focused on providing education and tools and resources for students and parents around substance abuse issues. And then, there will be a panel discussion from eight o'clock till quarter of nine or thereabouts. So, we encourage all parents, we have, I did preview this with the parent organizations, APTO, SOS, and PTO, they were invited for a preview. In part, we were very anxious and interested in hearing their comments prior to the presentation so that we could center some of the discussion around concerns that parents had expressed after viewing the movie.
Yep.
It was well-attended, I want to thank the administrative team. It was also open for NASA members, the administrative team, to come and join us, and Greg attended as well, and it was, we had about twenty-four folks coming on Wednesday morning, and then we, again, had a preview on Thursday, just to make sure that we gave everyone maximum opportunity to participate. Lori Pardea, District Nurse Leader, is our representative on the Coalition on a regular basis, and was also there to share a lot of information. So, overall, I think about forty people may have previewed, and we walked- So overall, I think about 40 people may have previewed, and we walked away with a lot of good information.
So has expressed to me some concerns that parents are going to bring young children. Was that an issue with anybody who, that you know of that watched it?
That was not discussed, and it is not necessarily, it is really up to the parents in terms of whether they want to bring their child or not. It is a very powerful presentation, and...
Isn't it rated? Is it?
There's no rating on it.
Okay.
But the topics are very sensitive, and it does, it is somewhat graphic in terms of the presentation of students who are addicted to opioids and what that can bring about in terms of their lives, and also just, I, you know, I think it's going to be difficult for high school students to view it, let alone someone younger than that. So if, if I were to give a parent a recommendation, should I be asked, I would not suggest that they would be bringing their students at this time.
Good to know.
I will say that there is a link to the video that will be made available, and one of the most meaningful ways for this to be viewed is probably with parents with their children and having some very meaningful dialogue with their children.
Thank you, thank you for working with the Coalition. Thank you. Future agenda items. Certainly we will hear back from the conference.
MASC, MSS report.
And budget goal, yeah, budget goals. How that is an agenda item?
School calendar. In December.
Well, it's in combine, right? Or do they want us...
So there was some conversation, as Sue said, at the last minute, she was also here, Patty was here from Northborough, and we were able to have a conversation with the K-8, Northborough and K-8 Southborough, because they did have quorums at the meeting, at the combined meeting. Thank you very much for that, and we had some very good conversation, and because of the amount of information and the complexity of the topic, I think there was some consensus that to have it only at the December combined meeting and expect that we may or may not move it to a vote was ambitious, and that the combined meeting is on December 18th, preceding the regional meeting on December 18th, and that it would be difficult to perhaps engage in all of the questions and the discussions that might be necessary if we were just going to limit ourselves to having that take place on the 18th and then moving to a definite vote. So I know there was some conversation with Southborough that they were going to bring it to school committee, which would be in December, and Regional will be bringing it to November, if they choose to put it on their agenda, because it's late in this month, and they couldn't put it on the December agenda because their meeting is right after the combined meeting.
So...
So that, we're meeting so early.
Early.
In November, not really November.
December.
That December might be just an opportunity for conversation.
And just because we have it on the agenda doesn't indicate what kind of discussion, so I would lean towards putting it on the agenda unless they're...
I would too.
Okay, then.
Can't hurt, better bear off that than the other way.
I agree.
Realize that we should have an opportunity.
So we have consensus that calendar will be on...
And is the intent to have a discussion and not a vote, or to have a recommended vote?
Well, if it's on the agenda, it can be voted on.
Sure.
When we, as, you know, the first step is putting it on the agenda. What this committee does in December, when it becomes, when it's an agenda item, it comes up, we shall see.
We'll deliberate, we'll figure it out.
Yes, exactly.
The policy says we need to vote on it before independent...
There's no policy that says that we need to vote on it.
No, the calendar policy that we passed not long ago said that we would...
We have to take a vote, but we usually take a vote in combine.
Yes.
Because we're in session as a committee when it's in the combine, so that's...
So, one of the advantages to having the discussion at a minimum at each of the committees is if that discussion includes altering any of the other days, like professional development days, and that becomes part of the conversation, that would provide input and time for me to do, present a revised calendar at the combined meeting, which may change the days we have professional development. So that input is helpful for all of us if we are to propose a revised recommended.
And I didn't mean to leap over the Peaslee School Improvement Plan and PTO, that is a good...
It's still on there.
Still on there.
I was just going to say ditto to what we talked about.
That's fine. Any other items I missed? Feel free to reach out to me if there was something that we didn't discuss tonight and that you'd like to see on the next, on the December meeting. So I, we do have a special recognition?
We do. And we made reference to that early on. I can't imagine what, what that felt like Cheryl Corrby after being in the district since 2008, no, since 1985. I was thinking about her placement as a school business administrator. How she has masterfully managed the rebudgets all these years is still, I know it's not a mystery, I see it every day, but I don't know if anyone who isn't familiar really intimately with the process can imagine how much work, how much stress, how much commitment and dedication that takes. So there's no really simple way to thank Cheryl for all of what she's contributed to the district over these years in her varying roles and working for numerous administration. But thank you is a start.
Okay.
And it's two simple words that certainly can't summarize and can't begin to say all of what she's contributed to this district.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
But I do have to say, part of it is certainly the work of all of the administrators sitting at this table, as well as the school committee members, I mean, it's just the amount of work that everybody else does here is absolutely tremendous, and it can be accomplished throughout the time, so thank you.
And in celebration...
There's a cake.
There is cake.
There's cake. There's cupcakes.
I think we should adjourn.
Another quick.
Okay.
Oh, actually, this is a quick procedural, can we consider using the Google Calendar invite so we can see who's RSVP to the four, very easy way.
Is that the doodle poll?
No, it's not doodle poll, it helps to schedule meetings, right? But a regularly scheduled meeting doesn't have a doodle poll associated with it, but it's, it would clear up the question of whether there's a form, the responses to a calendar invite.
I'd love, and I don't know if there's a program that allows us to do both instead of sending out two.
Two what?
So we're going to be sending out the Google, yeah, absolutely. I don't know if it's in lieu of the doodle or it's in addition to the doodle.
Subcommittee staff for meetings, we generally don't.
Doodle is for scheduling.
Right, we've used doodle for both because it's the easiest way to get a quorum count for us, but we can certainly do either one.
To confirm, like I got a text today, so.
Instead of having to send a meeting...
I think the challenge is just having it arrive and returned, because if we can send it, we can pretty much know if we have a quorum almost immediately. But we can certainly do that as well. Let me talk with Cheryl tomorrow and see how she wants to orchestrate that, she's the master of the doodle and the invites, but yeah, we could certainly do that.
And it goes on your calendar.
Yes, good luck for that one.
You can add calendar entries to your own calendar.
Perhaps we can just try sending the invite, because if that gives us an immediate quorum check, that's the ultimate goal. So if we pick, if we have the date, like for school committees, for example, we already have the date, so we can just do that for school committees.
That's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay, yeah, that's a great idea.
And you get responses.
For those that are already in the calendar booked, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, the doodle poll has, helps us identify other meeting times.
We'll do a combo.
Just an idea.
And that's a good one. We'll start that, I'm trying to think what meeting we have scheduled, yeah.
December 6?
Yeah, December 6, and I think it's going to be a regular day, the Wednesday in our regular time.
Actually, we can try it next, sooner than that, we've got some subcommittees, we date's already set, so it's a good trial run.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second by Keith, all in favor? Great, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Cupcakes to be had, after Warrenton.
After Warrenton.
After we sign.